Is to confirm the minutes of the council meeting which took place on the 11th of December 2018. Are you agreed that I should sign these as a correct record?
Three.
Thank you, I will sign these later. Item two, apologies for absence, or are there any apologies, Mr Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies received from councillors John Fraser, Pat Frost, Jill Hargreaves, Val Henry, Nick Holder, Peter Isherwood, Martin Lear, Tom Martin, Libby Piper, Bob Upton and John Ward.
Thank you, Mr Taylor. Item three on the agenda is the declarations of interest. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interests to declare? Mr Taylor?
Thank you. Councillor Chris Storey has declared a disclosable procurnary interest in relation to the Part One matter on the executive minutes on empty homes, council tax discounts and premium.
Thank you very much. Are there any further declarations, councillors? If not, then we'll move on to item four, which are mayor's announcements. I don't have any many announcements to make, I would just like to remind people that those of you who may still have a dinner in the diary for the 15th of February for my charity, that has been cancelled, so it may be rescheduled, or I may just write to you asking you for money, but I'll reflect on that. I would like to say that in the run up to Christmas, the first two weeks of December, there were some wonderful concerts at schools, various different places, and I was particularly touched by one, which was Broadwater Schools rendition of Oh Holy Night, which was absolutely magnificent, if you ever get a chance to hear them again, it was so inspiring. But I have no other major announcements to make at this time, so we will move on to item five, which are questions from the members of the public. Are there any received?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item six, question time, have any questions received from members?
We have received questions from councillor Knowles, councillor Follows and councillor Hyman.
Yes, so these have all been tabled, we have comprehensive responses on the yellow sheets for your ongoing perusal. Item seven, have any motions been received from members?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We now move to the, one of the most substantive items of the agenda this evening, which is the budget for 2018-19. Leader, would you please introduce the budget to the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I am pleased to introduce the budget for the forthcoming year, and I believe that I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members, officers and members of the public, I propose the annual budget for Waverley Borough Council, and I'm pleased to put before the council this evening a sustainable, balanced budget driven by a strategy of efficiency, investment and income. This is a budget that has been produced under exceedingly challenging financial circumstances, and I will shortly ask that the portfolio holder for finance draw out the main headlines. This budget is proposed by a conservative administration that truly cares about Waverley's community. The budget is based on a sound and sensible medium term financial strategy aiming not only to protect vital services into the future, but to improve our offer to residents by being more innovative and collaborative in the way in which we operate. Now, this time last year, our financial plan forecast a 1.5 million pound shortfall in the 2019-20 budget, but this conservative administration is now presenting to council a balanced budget that protects services, has no reduction to grants, community organisations and does not increase any car parking charges. We were certainly very pleased when the government announced that it would not inflict the Nevoite grant of some 814,000 next year, but we're also very much aware that this has only been put back at this stage, not removed. We still have no full certainty on that. We've therefore had to plan for this in our medium term projections. We've been able to balance the budget through the hard work from officers and councillors working together over many months, and my supreme thanks to the overview and scrutiny committees and the budget working group. They've done really great work, working together, and as I say, I'd like to echo my thanks and that of my leadership team. Balancing next year's budget has not happened by accident, we have had to put in place robust strategies covering procurement, treasury management and property investment. These have all delivered really positive outcomes. We've had an excellent result from tendering the new waste and recycling contract, which will save us money, but not at the expense of service quality. We've made sensible, but again, important property investments that are bringing in money, bringing in important revenue to this council to pay towards our services and keeping good quality office accommodation in the borough by safeguarding a number of business premises. And we've used our cash holding more effectively to actually generate interest income. Now, it would have been very easy to raid reserves, to get a quick fixed budget, especially ahead of an election, but this conservative administration does not believe in election gimmicks. That would have been incredibly short sighted, given the challenges ahead, would have only stored up problems for the future. We're proposing a council tax increase to help pay for the inflation on our costs, and this equates to 2.99% of an increase, approximately 10 pence per week for a band D property in the borough. It would have been easy to cut back on investing in our community facilities around the borough, but we know that these are used and valued by our residents. Our car parks, our play areas, our parks, our leisure centres, they're all really important to our residents. In fact, we're spending more next year to ensure that these facilities meet our residents' need. We've agreed a 3.2 million pound investment to improve and extend both the Farnham and Godling Leisure Centres, and we've made a commitment for a multi-million pound investment in leisure facilities in Cranley. We're investing more on our IT and kickstarting a major customer service project. We've allocated over 1 million pounds to invest in our car parks. This budget does not include arbitrary unidentified savings targets, it does not include major redundancy programmes. We're not proposing any increases in next year's budget to our car parking charges, but we've listened to our community, and this conservative administration is proposing to work with local businesses and councillors across the next year on a full review of car parking provision in the borough. Now, turning to the medium term, make no mistake, this council is faced with a massive financial challenge. The medium term financial strategy presented in the report tonight shows that without taking any action, we would be faced with a 3.8 million pound shortfall in our budget by 2023. Doing nothing is simply not an option. So, we have a strategy for addressing this budget shortfall, which is robust, prudent and achievable. Our strategy does not rely on uncertain sources of income. As I've said, our strategy is very simple, it's about efficiency, investment and income. Efficiency in the way that we deliver our services, including our costs, income and staff resources. Our reviews will have the customer at the core. Investment in new and existing assets to generate income. Acquiring commercial property in a sensible, prudent and proportionate way. We've agreed a new strategy and have made four good acquisitions recently that will bring in three quarters of a million pounds in income on a yearly basis. Importantly, we have agreed to acquire others, but also not being afraid to walk away if the final deal hasn't been good enough. An investment, investment in our own assets, our investment in leisure centres will bring better facilities and, in conjunction with that, much needed income to the council. The Brightwells Farnham regeneration scheme will transform a major part of Farnham Town Centre, strengthen the local economy, bring income to Waverley and jobs when it is complete in the next two to three years. We need to look at all sources of income, existing and new, and that is exactly what we have been doing. We have listened to the Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and we'll be launching a full review of all fees and charges across the coming year, so again, my thanks to them and for the really good constructive points that they raised. Turning now to housing and to the HRA. The council has a 30 million pound a year long term business plan for the operation of its 500 plus council homes, and the report before you tonight is an example of excellent joined up working between officers, councillors and tenants. Waverley has responded effectively to the government pressure on the business plan, which has seen a forced 1% rent reduction in each of the last four years, and extensive welfare reforms which have also impacted. We have acted responsibly and managed our costs and revised our investment plans, which has put us on a very solid footing going forward. We continue to build new affordable homes for our residents, and the report includes nearly 40 million pounds of spend on new build projects over the next three years. This on top of 20 million pounds in the last three years. We take housing in this borough extremely seriously, and there cannot be many other councils in the country building new affordable homes on this scale. The report shows that in 2019-20, our housing rents will go down by 1% for the fourth year in a row. We're not proposing to increase garage rents either, contrary to some comments that have already been made, just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So, just taking a moment to reflect on the successes led by and achieved by this conservative administration during the past year, we've achieved and are implementing still in a few weeks' time. After long consultation and examination stages, I'm really delighted that this will be in place from March the 1st, providing funding for much needed infrastructure in our borough. We've seen in the last few months the opening of the Memorial Hall in Farnham, a 3 million pound multi-use community centre. We could have made do with a smaller facility, but we were ambitious. We had vision, we wanted something that was more versatile, more accessible, and that would be a new home for the Brightwells Gostrey Centre, for Waverley Training Services and offer so much more to our community. We've taken back control of the previously underused, underutilised and underinvested waste centre in Hazelmeir. We've introduced an economic development strategy, approved in the latter part of last year, providing a platform for supporting and building our local economy, which includes working much more closely with our local businesses. The Wayhill Car Park, we're delighted with the inspector's decision that really does now enable us to make better use of that site and really make sure that we improve it for the residents and that local community in Hazelmeir. And Brightwells, the bridge that this council rightly insisted on to minimise construction traffic through Farnham Town Centre is now complete, and the development can really start to make progress and gather pace. Local Plan Part One, again, approved last year, a landmark achievement for this borough after many years without an up to date plan, to ensure that we have appropriate plan led So, some of our successes, Madam Mayor, I'd now like to take an opportunity to again reiterate my thanks and that of my team to the overview and scrutiny committees for all their hard work, and also to the officers, without whom this wouldn't have been possible. Our heads of service, Mr Clark for all his work, the finance team who work both for the general fund but also for the all important housing revenue account. They've worked so hard for so many months, and tonight is the culmination of all of that. And in summary, I would emphasise that these budget proposals before you this evening, colleagues, seek to deliver a sustainable, balanced financial strategy based on investment and income generation, but also protecting our core frontline services for our residents in Waverley. This conservative administration firmly believes that these budget proposals represent outstanding value for our council taxpayers in monetary terms and the all important delivery of services to our Waverley residents. Madam Mayor, I commend this budget to council, thank you.
Leader. I would now, I would now like to ask the Finance Prophyl older councillor Jed Hall to please introduce the agenda items eight, one to eight point three, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's a difficult act to follow, the leaders mentioned most of the things I was going to mention. However.
You don't have to mention them again.
I'll be very brief, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. The report on pages 19 to 68 outlines the medium term financial strategy for 2019 to 2022, including the general fund budget. I'm pleased to say that with the hard work of officers and members, we can once again present to council a balanced budget. As most of you are aware, there have been significant challenges. I am however pleased to report that this budget contains no cuts in services, no reductions in community grants and no rises in car parking charges. Once again, we have managed to offset rising inflationary costs with efficiencies, innovation and improved procurement strategies, accompanied by a small rise in council tax of approximately 10 pounds per week on a band D property. Our, 10p a week, apologies, 10p a week. Yes, I think I've read it way too much. Our residents can remain confident that this conservative administration will continue to work to ensure there will be no cuts to resident services or community grants across the borough. I would like to especially thank the chairman and the members of the Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee for their comments and their full support. Indeed, the budget is both realistic and achievable, and I would like to join them in expressing my gratitude to the officers who work so hard to achieve the balance and protect our resident services. However, members, whilst we have a balanced budget and we have ensured no cuts, and while it is our stated aspiration to maintain this position, I must remind all members that we face a number of significant risks to our financial position. We are increasingly concerned about the future of the new homes bonus, which pays for a significant proportion of our capital spend. There is currently a review of the business rates retention scheme, which to Waverley is worth 2 million pounds a year, and the 800,000 pounds negative grant has been waived for this year, but we still lack the clarity on whether or when it will return. These risks remained clear and present, and if prudently accounted for, give us a negative balance in the years ahead. However, as in previous years, we will overcome these risks by a combination of small increases in council tax, further savings and efficiencies and increased property incomes. I note there has been some concern expressed as to the potential scale of the savings which can be achieved in the coming years, whilst retaining and improving current levels of service to our residents. I can assure all members that this has been and will continue to be our top priority for our directors, our heads of service and our finance team. This initiative will, in the days ahead, take centre stage of the council's priorities. Another concern raised was the level of council tax, the 10p per week raises round about 290,000 pounds a year for the council. This is far lower than our annual rise in costs due to inflation of half a million pounds, which year on year erodes our income. The rise only part covers the cost, while the remainder comes from efficiencies and new income streams. In other words, the extra revenue only helps, it doesn't solve the problem. At budget time, there is always the pressure to engage in cheap gimmicks, to throw financial prudency to the wind in favour of unsustainable short term popularity. Providing good services costs money, but providing sustainable services needs sustainable revenue. This conservative administration is unwilling to risk the future of our resident services, unwilling to deprive our communities of grants and unwilling to burn much needed investment capital which provides future investment in our community facilities. Being financially prudent is the only way to ensure we can deliver on this for our residents, not just for this year but for the years to come. Members, I'm pleased to report the budget is balanced and places the council in the strongest possible position to withstand asymmetric shocks. Our capital spending on community facilities has been maintained, our service provision to residents is reinforced, and our community grants still flow to the voluntary sector for sports clubs, for vulnerable residents and for the cohesion and vibrancy of our communities. The medium term financial plan keeps pace with rising costs, increases council efficiencies and maintains the services to our residents. Members, the budget is fair, sustainable and prudent, and I urge you all to support the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Councillor MacLeod, as the nominated substitute for the leader of the opposition, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start by passing on the good wishes of councillor Ward from his holiday home, and his apologies for inflicting me on your substitute in responding to this budget. I'm grateful to councillor Beeman, chairman of the Value for Money and Customer Services ONS Committee, for taking the time to brief me on his views on the budget, and to Graham Clark for patiently listening to my comments and answering my questions on the subject. Also, I must thank councillor Hyman for putting me right where I was in danger of being too kind to the council. Graham has assured, Graham has assured me that the budget for this year is realistic and achievable, and this is what the numbers indicate. Councillor Beeman and his committee agree with this. At a time of central government cutbacks in funding and so many other local authorities and financial difficulties, this must count as an achievement for Waverley. Does this mean that they will be publicly rejoicing and dancing in the street throughout Waverley when residents receive their council tax bills? I fear not. Both Waverley and Surrey are increasing their share of council tax by just under 3%, the maximum possible without a public referendum, and the police commissioner by 10%. Of course, residents don't actually recognise that this is an all great big problem, as probably you know, they think that Waverley are the council and they're responsible for all of this, so that's a problem for Waverley. We may or may not be coming toward the end of this area of austerity, but many of our residents have suffered reductions in their incomes and standards of living and will not welcome increases of this size in their council tax. A problem with local authority finance is that it's complex and difficult for members of the public and even councillors to understand. Many monopolies or near monopolies such as utility companies and railway companies are supervised and regulated, and much informed analysis and data is made available to the public. This puts pressures on these organisations to perform efficiently and provide value for money to the public. This is not the case for local authorities, which are also monopolies. The government who should provide this function seem to do the very opposite, making life very difficult for local authorities by constantly creating uncertainty about local authority finance. They have also completely messed up the planning system, costing local authorities to waste large sums of money, public money, in attempting to defend their position against the powerful developers lobby, their planning appeals and at the examinations of local plans and neighbourhood plans, and in some cases, the subsequent judicial reviews. Councillor Beeman is going to expand on his statement on the iniquities of government mismanagement of local authority finance, so I won't say more, but perhaps, quote Donald Tusk, that perhaps a special place in hell is awaiting the minister's responsible, although after Brexit, there may be very few places left available. So, who does hold the council to account for providing value for money to the public in the absence of external supervision? As the leader has said, it has to be the opposition, the opposition members in the ONS committees. In my view, as the leader has again said, this has greatly improved since the ONS system was reorganised. The council's key services are regularly reviewed, which puts the proper degree of pressure on the officers to deliver value for money. However, as a responsible opposition group, I feel I have to comment on what I regard as two major areas of failure of this council, albeit which began from in the past administration, as these still have major consequences today, financial consequences today. The first is the two failures to deliver a local plan over a 10 year period. This has undoubtedly lost the borough, and thus our residents many millions of pounds in much needed infrastructure contributions from developers. The second is the Brightwells development. This is Waverley's largest project, and it's now vital, now that it's happening, that it's brought to a successful conclusion, as the leader has said. We must all work to do this. Waverley and Surrey together, Surrey investing a major sum in the commercial side of this project. However, things don't currently look all that promising. Chris Nicholson, Chris Nicholson told councillors in this chamber last July that we would be marketing the larger retail units in the first half of this year and the smaller retail units and restaurants in the latter half of this year. Yet in a letter to last year's Farnham Herald, their development director, told us that the marketing of the larger retail units will now take place in late 2019 and early 2020, and the remainder close to the opening of the retail centre in spring 2021. So this, to my mind, is very worrying for all of us. Waverley has invested a great deal in this project, and it's important that it is successful so we get our money back. 4 million pounds was invested in land purchase, 3.3 million in... Four million pounds was invested in land purchase, three point three million in extending the memorial hall for the Gostie Centre and other matters, two million in relocating the tennis courts, and around six hundred thousand will now be spent on refurbishing the South Street car park, partly for the benefit of the scheme, although this car park is in urgent need of redevelopment. What have we received back so far? As far as I know, we've had three million pounds for the land, and don't forget, we spent four million pounds on land acquisition. So effectively, we've made a loss of a million pounds in land. And we just have to hope that what now happens, that Surrey and Waverley will work together to make sure this project succeeds. I'd like to actually finish on a positive note, if I may. I think things are getting better at Surrey County Council, which is important to us, particularly as they are a partner in this development. They have a new chief executive and a new management team, which seems to be much better than the previous one. And that is, I have to say, reflected here. I think we've now got a much better management team under the auspices of the new chief executive. At Surrey, again, in terms of the political side, there's a new political leadership with Tim Oliver and Colin Kemp, and they seem to be a much more positive and open team than the previous team. I'd like to say something nice about the executive here as well, that we're coming up, as the leader said, to local elections in the near future. So we can't really do that, because we'll be saying in a month or two's time how utterly hopeless they are, I'm afraid. Now, in terms of the budget, I won't actually be voting against the budget for the reasons I said. I can't speak for my colleagues, we don't have a party here, they can all vote however they like. I may abstain, I may even vote for it, depending what I hear other people say. So that's my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. So we are going to have one general budget debate on the general fund, the HRA, and the council tax, all at the same time. However, if there are any amendments, does anyone have any amendments which they would like to table now? If not, then I will... Yes, councillor Hyman, you have an amendment.
Sorry, I did phone up earlier this afternoon and ask whether some minor changes to the way that some of the fees and charges are laid out and explained...
Yes, you've got a new sheet that lays out and reflects the minor changes that you mentioned. It's been tabled, and it reflects what you discussed with them this afternoon.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, councillors, I'm going to open up the debate, and each of you has up to four minutes. You don't have to use the full four minutes, and you don't all have to speak, but please be free to do so if you so wish. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was very interested in councillor MacLeod's comments. As a fellow member of Surrey County Council, I certainly welcome his positive comments about Surrey County Council. But the point that I really wanted to make was concerning his comments on council tax. Of course, no authority likes to raise council tax, but on the other hand, no authority likes to reduce services. It's interesting at Waverley that for six of the last nine years, Waverley has held its council tax increase at exactly zero. In other words, for six out of the last nine years, council tax has been frozen by Waverley Borough Council. I think that's pretty remarkable. In the administration, the four-year administration before the one that we are now in, council tax increase was exactly zero. For the four years finishing this thirty-first of March of this year, the average increase per year has been about two percent. And we are now proposing an increase for the year coming of two point nine nine percent with no service cuts, no reduction in community grants, and no car park charge increases. I think that's a pretty remarkable position to hold, especially within the context of very tough national finances over the last nine or ten years, and the squeeze on all funding of local authorities. I think that's a pretty remarkable achievement, and we in this council can be justly proud of that. So I congratulate this Conservative administration on its good track record and on the wise decisions that it is making for the year to come. And I will certainly be supporting the increase that is proposed and the budget as a whole. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Beaman.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As chair of the Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I welcome the opportunity to review the budget proposals and medium-term financial plan at a meeting on the twenty-second of January, to which all councillors were invited, and we had an open and free discussion. With regard to the year ahead, there is no doubt that a balanced budget is both realistic and achievable. Officers are indeed to be congratulated on all the work that has been undertaken to reach this situation. The Value for Money and Customer Service Overview and Scrutiny Committee did however express concern that the scheduled fees and charges attached as annex four did not provide sufficient information to enable the income from fees to assess whether the income from fees and charges had been maximised. Well, the executive committee held on the fifth of February, the portfolio holder, councillor Hall, provided us reassurance that this information will now be provided. The Value for Money and Customer Service ONS looks forward to being able to comment more constructively regarding fees and charges in future years. Whilst it appears that Waverley have indeed yet again managed to pull a white rabbit from the hat in being able to protect the provisional frontline services, including the level of community grants, and not increasing car park charges, such a fortunate position does not happen by itself. Waverley has a reputation for being financially prudent, which is deserved. New Homes Bonus has not, unlike many other local authorities, been used to balance the budget and has been placed in reserves. Next year's balanced budget has been assisted by the negotiation of a new waste and recycling contract at a very competitive price, and by central government's decision not to collect eight hundred thousand, or eighteen thousand I know here, in negative grant. This is, however, the calm before the storm, or the potential storm. As we all aware, the government is currently undertaking a spending review, which for the local government sector and our intention to use business is getting tensioned by local authorities on fifty percent to seventy-five percent. It is, however, of concern that Waverley, like many other local authorities in the South East, are not expecting to see any benefit from this. The report before you states that Waverley collects thirty-seven million in business rates. This dwarfs the amount collected in council tax from residents, which is less just than the ten million. Yet at present, Waverley only retains two million out of the eighteen point five million, that's fifty percent of the thirty-seven, collected in business rates. And even though this amount is expected to increase to seventy-five percent, i.e. by another nine million, which is equal to the amount collected just about in council tax, Waverley, the medium-term financial plan is based on the assumption that even this derisory amount of two million that Waverley currently retains is being fixed will be lost. I find this situation totally unacceptable. In the medium-term financial plan, it's supposed to make good this loss by increased net property rate income of three hundred thousand pounds per annum, and the rest by increased revenue and various efficiency savings. No doubt the increased property income includes revenue from Brightwells, of which there's still great uncertainty, given the changes taking place in the national retail sector, and I've already drawn attention to the fact that it is unknown whether there's any real sculpt increase in revenue fees and charges. As for any efficient savings, these are unspecified, and councillor Macband that the executive committee on Fifth Avenue expresses concern as to how Waverley expects to achieve these savings. Until the government's spending review is complete later this year, it is uncertain whether Waverley will be able to benefit from any increased tension in business rates. Whilst it is indeed right to be cautious, members should be under no illusion that the present Conservative central government, I've added that by break, because it seems to be a popular word today, is no friend of local government, and that even prudent authorities like Waverley look likely to continue to be punished for their efficiency. If Waverley is not able to retain the derisory amount of business it currently retains, then they'll have no option but to significantly cut frontline services, reduce the amount pending community grants, and substantially increase car park charges. As part of the review, there are currently two consultations taking place, and I hope that these, this is business reform and fair funding review, and I hope that we will make a strong argument for maintaining as much business rates as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Beaman. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I always enjoy a full council, so many councillors I absolutely never see anything else. So it's always nice to see what a generally representative bunch we all are when we're together like this, and we make decisions that impact so many people. Like all councils, we face extreme pressure from government austerity policies, and also from the near-financial implosion of Surrey County Council, itself an exemplar of failure and mismanagement, and a body that will almost certainly continue to push services down to local government through chain without much of its funding, all the while calling it partnership, shocks we're ill-prepared for. Caring Conservatives, well, we must have cornered the market on that scarce commodity nationwide at present. We have seen in Waverley, as elsewhere, an explosion of the use of food banks, in the use of the voluntary sector, in the need for debt management services, in poverty and in homelessness. One wonders how many members here have had to make use of those services or be in that position themselves, and how a tax rise might feel to them if they were. It's actually not the tax rise I have a problem with, it's the context that it sits in, and that context is a Conservative context nationwide. But it has to be said, officers have done a fantastic job in trying to paper over the cracks, or more accurately, the impending fissures, and for one more year to prop up the shop, a tax rise to keep things just about as they are, perhaps the last time they were able to do this, as the medium-term outlook beyond this year looks extremely bleak. As to electoral gimmicks, one might almost imagine that their current political masters have an election to fight this year, and are banking on residents not looking beyond this decision or to the national picture. The portfolio holder has laid the groundwork for that likely future in his speech, and I do not believe the services can be maintained without significant changes locally and nationally. I have little confidence in the income streams generating what is forecast. Councillor MacLeod has highlighted some examples of this, as has councillor Beaman. I would, however, like to quickly take this opportunity to thank Graham and Peter for taking the time to meet with me in person to discuss the budget, and in depth to answer questions that I had since. I'd also like to thank councillor Beaman for his chairmanship of the scrutiny committee that allowed a serious and civilised opportunity for members to discuss the budget in depth. It was at that session that many of my questions were answered, but concerns regarding investment forecasts, fees and charges remain. It was also a shame that only twenty-five of fifty-seven councillors attended that meeting, and only two from Godalming, of which I was one. If I may conclude by putting some questions to the leader, if she'd be so good to answer. Last year, I asked the leader to demonstrate how you engaged with your party at Surrey, and more importantly, in Parliament, to challenge their approach to austerity more generally, which really establishes the context of the problem that I have with this budget. I ask you that again now, as many of you will stand under its banner in May, and I can only assume if you do that you agree with those policies. So please explain what you have done to challenge those policies at Surrey and nationally. How will towns such as Godalming benefit from SIL if they've already met their local plan targets? And if they do benefit, how will you achieve that without essentially depriving other areas in order to do so? And finally, I ask you to confirm the laughable figure of thirty-four thousand pounds for Brexit preparation that I believe you have received, and ask what you will be using it for. To conclude, for lack of clarity on fees and charges, my concerns with forecasting, and frankly, due to the impending national and Surrey-related issue that will almost certainly scupper this budget probably within the next quarter, it is my intent to abstain this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Regarding the housing revenue account, I felt extremely privileged when, as mayor of Waverley, I had the opportunity of digging the first sod, as they say, of four different social housing developments within the borough. The one across the road from Godalming's parish church of St Peter and St Paul, for example, has been shortlisted for a design award. However, I was even more thrilled to be allowed a crafty snoop around the completed Warren Road development in my own ward of Binscombe just before the residents moved in. It was beautiful. To my mind, Waverley can feel justly proud of its new social housing, and I very much hope they will have chance to extend their social bill programme, always providing, of course, much-needed funds are not dissipated along the way by unnecessary and costly judicial reviews and the like. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Wheatley. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before you start timing me, can I just ask, are we meant to be talking about the housing revenue account at the moment, or are we on the general fund budget?
I did say, if you were listening, councillor Hyman, if you were listening, I did say there would be one general budget debate on the general fund, HRA, and council tax.
So we've got four minutes on the whole lot?
Yes. And you'd better get going, because your time's running up.
I think a lot of what I intended to say was covered by, particularly by councillor Follows and also by councillor MacLeod. But the question of prudence, of course, yes, I think we have to agree, it's probably a prudent budget, because by definition, we have to be prudent. The section one-five-one officer cannot be put before as something he believes isn't prudent, it's a requirement in law. It is undoubtedly an election budget. It is a benign budget, it leaves the pain, it leaves the axes to the services and the grants, the discretionary services and whatever, until later, of course, and that's what we've been told, but I think you yourselves know that. The government has sent a lifeline to councils by not applying the one million pounds that we were going to have to save this year. We're very lucky we haven't had to, but to members of the public, I'm not sure that they will see it as prudent in the same way as we might describe it in this chamber, because, you know, they see, well, that's six hundred and five thousand pounds, the largest capital project on the general fund, which councillor MacLeod mentioned in doing up Sainsbury's car park. That there, from the beginning, was meant to be paid for out of the East Street scheme, i.e. out of the developers' costs, before we got our money, which obviously we didn't get. Looking at what we're going to get from the East Street scheme, quite frankly, Madam Mayor, I would appreciate it if someone would tell us, because we haven't heard anything about it for a good few years now, how much is the guaranteed minimum that we are going to get from the Brightwell scheme? Because the new homes bonus, which the estimates relied upon, has been chopped down and sent elsewhere. How much exactly is the guaranteed minimum that we would receive each year from the Brightwell scheme, and when would that start, please? Because I think we should know that in order to be able to plan ahead. As far as the principle of putting the budget up is concerned, paragraph fourteen on page twenty-two of our papers, Madam Mayor, tells us, it concludes by saying, it is therefore vital that the maximum available increase is made each year. And I don't like that. As a principle, we're meant to be serving the residents, the people who get hit by above-inflation rises, which drive inflation, of course, it's the wrong thing to do. The people who are hit most are those who are on fixed incomes, the people who have small incomes and their rent to pay, or people who have investments and are getting very low returns on their investments, effectively on fixed incomes, and we're hurting those people. And over time, we hurt them more and more and more. If we take this attitude, unlike perhaps East Hans, I know we were congratulated last year, I don't know what they're doing this year, we could, if we weren't spending that six hundred thousand pounds on the Sainsbury's car park, which we shouldn't have had to spend, that could have been a three percent drop in our council tax precept this year, because it's about a hundred thousand pound per percentage. My other concern with this is in respect of paragraph thirty-seven, the risks of this budget. And it says, the main risk continues to be whether the reserve will be required to meet the cost of defending the council in any appeals or judicial review proceedings. In the event that these costs exceed the available funding, the council will need to divert some of the funding from the Property Investment Fund. Unfortunately, what we've got later on the agenda is that the council has, or the executive did a fortnight ago, agreed that they were going to allow us to break the law. So I certainly will not be voting in favour of this when the main risks, we are encouraging the risk of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am absolutely certain that I'm going to vote in favour of this budget and all that goes with it. There was tremendous words from our leader, from our portfolio holder for finance, and indeed my colleague, councillor Martin. It goes without saying that a budget that maintains all the services, maintains all the grants, and strikes a balanced budget is fantastic news. And I join with others in thanking the officers, Peter Vickers, Graham Clark are with us. But guys, if you can pass on those thanks to the rest of your team, and I know the work that goes into that, I've seen it quite close. Also, I saw with interest the provisions at para forty-five about capital, about the way you're now making sure that we spend the capital in the right period, and indeed you seem to have some sort of reserve projects just in case somebody slips that can then come in and we keep delivering those services and improvements. I would though like to keep my best piece of praise for the HRA account. A number of years ago, when we first heard that rents were going to have to come down by one percent in real terms per year, that we were perhaps facing the end... by 1% in real terms per year, that we were perhaps facing the end of building affordable council houses in Waverley. councillor Carroll King with the support of officers, and I guess the finance team, I know you get to report to you ever so efficiently, crikey, well done, and thank you, and please pass on my thanks, I suspect everybody's thanks, back to your team for what they've achieved there, and that we've got more houses being built, and I think the leader said, almost by exception, compared to other councils. councillor McLeod, I'm fascinated, I'm getting really spoilt for words as to what to say. We've now got you in this chamber praising Surrey County Council Conservatives. That's following Surrey County Council's own council meeting, where your colleague councillor Stephen Spence was praising members of the Conservatives. Dear me, perhaps you've picked the wrong party, Andrew. Or maybe not, because I do think you're a little mistaken about your observations on the local plan and Brightwells. And if that's how you felt at the time, perhaps you should have come up with a proposal as to how the local plan could have gone through quicker. My recollection is that the opposite stance was being taken by members of the Farnham councillor Beaman, I admire your attempt to buffle us with numbers and the maths. I do think you're mistaken, but I'm not going to try and buffle everybody with the numbers again and repeat it and degurgitate it. councillor Follows, I'm really pleased that you can feel that the description of the budget is a fantastic job. Thank you very much, that's superb. Shame you don't feel you're necessarily fully in favour to support it. And councillor Hyman, I don't know where you get the idea this is an election budget, but please, you know, spoil the party, give us some proposals on an alternative election budget. It would be the first time, I think, we've had an opposition's alternative budget in this chamber. Now, wake up, smell the coffee, or admit you haven't got the skills and the talent to actually put the budget together, and you're just shouting in the wind. Thank you very much, Mrs Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Mulliner.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just have three comments. The budget, as councillor Hall and the leader put it forward, is a very sober budget. It's keeping things going at the current levels and not cutting services. For that, we should be grateful. But three general comments. The reason why we have such a difficult situation goes back some 12 years, when this country was running an enormous budget deficit. And despite the efforts of two administrations to reduce that deficit, we're still some £35 to £40 billion in deficit. We spend more on public services than we take in in taxes, and that is the fundamental reason why, because those two administrations with Conservative leadership have not chosen to follow the Corbyn money tree approach to borrowing your way out of everything. The second thing to say is that I do hope that councillor Hyman will go away and look up a textbook and spot the difference between capital expenditure and revenue. It is rather important if you're trying to run a council. And secondly, if you do want to run a balanced budget, and we do because it's required of us, if you reduce income, you must reduce services. And it would be good to know which services he had in mind that we should cut. Was it a day centre, or perhaps reduced the voluntary grants budget? It would be interesting to know. But lastly, I would like to say with a note of optimism, it was good to hear the leader and the portfolio holder and councillor Beaman all express the same sober warnings about what lies ahead. It is uncertain, but having worked as part of the Budget Strategy Working Group for the past nine months with officers and the leadership and other overview and scrutiny members, I'm confident that we have the abilities to face those uncertain challenges as effectively as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Mulliner. councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm rather confused, but I'm off to nan. Here we have a Liberal Democrat who, the administration before the Conservative administration, wrecked the budget, and we came and we sorted it out. And thank you to the leader and the officers for working continually harder in that. What I'm interested to see is, we're talking about the budget here, a 2.99% increase, but very interestingly, the Liberal Democrat member of this council wants to abstain, wants to sit on the fence, hasn't got backbone to say, yes, this is a budget that works for the local people. Does that member want to reduce Waverley Trading Services budget? Does he want to reduce Meals on Wheels? Does he want to reduce the millions of pounds the Conservative administration is spending on our sports centres for local people, for their health and wellbeing? Does he want to reduce community grants? Does he want to reduce town regeneration? Does he want to reduce local health and social facilities? Social housing is on the increase with this Conservative administration, affordable housing is on the increase with this Conservative administration. Support the budget, councillor Follows, because we will increase that, we will sustain our services, forget about the stuff you're talking about, this is the budget we're talking about today. Madam Mayor, I commend this, I think it's a great budget. Thank you very much.
Point of personal information, may I just say, that's exactly the problem, forgetting about the poverty, the debt, the rest of it.
Sorry, 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 no coming back, no. councillor Band.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have to join others in congratulating both the executive and officers in arriving the budget today. As somebody who, in the past for seven years, held the finance portfolio, I understand the challenges which have officers and our executive have faced in coming to this position. And so I fully endorse the position they've taken. I also am pleased to see they maintaining the policy set many years ago of clearly separating capital spend from revenue spend. The current policy of invest to save has been one of the foundations of the success of our budgets. And we emphasise time and time again, spending capital to subsidise a revenue budget is no way to proceed. Spending capital to generate long-term savings is the way forward, and I think this is the way this administration has shown. So I congratulate our members on doing this. I'd also like to pay tribute to those on the housing side and the HRA. In my ward, eleven, sorry, in my ward, seven new affordable houses, and in my parish, 11 affordable houses have been built. So the first time since Waverley has been formed, that new affordable houses have been built in my ward and my parish. Many congratulations to those involved. It is welcome on the doorstep, it is seen as one of the most positive things that Waverley have been able to do for this administration, and I congratulate all those involved. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Band. And finally councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just really wanted to speak up for members of the public. Either Farnham's full of intelligent people, or I just explain things very carefully, but everyone seems to understand the budget, and all our other policies for that matter. And I really do think that to talk down members of the public at this stage is not really very good. They are highly intelligent, very committed from what I see, and I just thought I ought to speak up for them, because...
Thank you councillor Coburn. Leader, would you like to sum up?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just to come back on a couple of the points raised during the debate. In terms of Brexit and the £35,000 that councillor Follows mentioned, yes, we are having regular internal meetings and have a strategy in place as directed by central government on Brexit. So there is various planning going on for that. We're working not just with central government, but also with other districts and boroughs, both in Surrey and neighbouring districts and boroughs, and also, of course, the county, the LGA as well are also involved. So, yes, there is an awful lot going on, if you like, behind the scenes, and we, obviously, if necessary, we will come forward to members with more information, but hopefully that starts to reassure you on that point. In terms of the council tax, and one of the points raised was about some of our lower-income households, and I'd just like to remind members that we do have council tax support for low-income families, and especially that we have the discretionary fund if required, and we have about 10% of our households who we do assist in that way. And to councillor Hyman's numerous points about the Brightwells Farnham regeneration scheme, I'd just like to remind him that the figures to which he refers are in the report. It was an exempt report, so I don't intend to go into exempt at this stage of May 2016, so he can clarify the figures that he's asking for. And South Street Car Park in Farnham, to which he also refers, is actually a Waverley car park. Madam Mayor, I, as I say, we have, and I think a number of colleagues have recognised this, we've recognised that we face challenges, we've planned for that, we've planned, if you like, for a worst-case scenario. We haven't included the Brightwells funding at this stage, but this is, as I've said already, a budget that is sustainable, is sustainable into the future, it recognises the challenges over the next three to four years that we face, we're not shying away from those. We have got plans in place, and members of the committee, the overview and scrutiny committee, of which councillor Beaman chaired, and I know councillor Band vice-chaired, are also aware of that, as are our wider members. And as I say, I commend to you this evening, colleagues and members, which I trust you will support, a balanced budget based on a forthcoming strategy of efficiencies, investment and income. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, leader. Councillors, as you know that there is a requirement for a recorded vote to be taken at budget-setting meetings. So in respect, what I'm proposing is to do it in three blocks. In respect of agenda item 8.1, the general fund budget for 2018, there are five recommendations. Can we take a recorded vote on those recommendations to approve the general fund en bloc? Is that agreed? Well, Mr Taylor calls your name, please indicate how you wish to vote, by saying for, against, or abstain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, Brian Adams?
Four.
Mike Band?
Four.
David Beaman?
Four.
Andrew Bolton?
Four.
Maurice Byham?
Four.
Carol Coburn?
Four.
Kevin Deenis?
Four.
Jim Edwards?
Four.
Patricia Ellis?
Four.
David Else?
Four.
Jenny Else?
Four.
Paul Follows?
Abstain.
Mary Forrowseski?
Four.
Michael Goodridge?
Four.
Tony Gordon Smith?
Four.
John Gray?
Four.
Jed Hall?
Four.
Mike Hodge?
Four.
David Hunter?
Four.
Gerry Hyman?
Abstain.
Simon?
Abstain.
Simon Inchbold?
Four.
Anna James?
Four.
Carol King?
Four.
Robert Knowles?
Four.
Madam Mayor Denise Legault?
Four.
Dennis Lee?
Four.
Andy McLeod?
Abstain.
Peter Martin?
Four.
Kika Miralles?
Abstain.
Stephen Mulliner?
Four.
Nabeel Nazir?
Four.
Julia Potts?
Four.
Sam Pritchard?
Four.
Wyatt Ramsdale?
Four.
Stefan Reynolds?
Four.
David Round?
Four.
Richard Seaborn?
Four.
Jeanette Thinnett?
Four.
Stuart Thinnett?
Four.
Chris Storey?
Four.
Nick Williams?
Four.
Is there any member who didn't vote?
Sorry?
Just checking that everybody had voted.
So, thank you. Four, 39, against, four, against, no, no, that's wrong, against zero, abstentions four. So the budget is approved. Thank you very much, members. For agenda item 8.2, the housing revenue account budget and business plan, there are five recommendations, again, can we take those en bloc? Thank you. Mr Taylor, again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, Brian Adams?
Four.
Mike Band?
Four.
David Beaman?
Four.
Andrew Bolton?
Four.
Maurice Byham?
Four.
Carol Coburn?
Four.
Kevin Deenis?
Four.
Jim Edwards?
Four.
Patricia Ellis?
Four.
Paul Follows?
Abstain.
Mary Forrowseski?
Four.
Michael Goodridge?
Four.
Tony Gordon Smith?
Four.
John Gray?
Four.
Jed Hall?
Four.
Val Henry?
No, she's not here.
Mike Hodge?
Four.
David Hunter?
Four.
Gerry Hyman?
Four.
Simon Inchbold?
Four.
Anna James?
Four.
Carol King?
Four.
Robert Knowles?
Four.
Madam Mayor Denise Legault?
Four.
Dennis Lee?
Four.
Andy McLeod?
Four.
Peter Martin?
Four.
Kika Miralles?
Four.
Stephen Mulliner?
Four.
Nabeel Nazir?
Four.
Julia Potts?
Four.
Sam Pritchard?
Four.
Wyatt Ramsdale?
Four.
Stefan Reynolds?
Four.
David Round?
Four.
Richard Seaborn?
Four.
Jeanette Thinnett?
Four.
Stuart Thinnett?
Four.
Chris Storey?
Four.
Liz Townsend?
Four.
Liz Wheatley?
Four.
Nick Williams?
Four.
Is there any member who didn't vote?
Sorry?
Just checking that everybody had voted.
So, thank you. Four, 39, against, four, against, no, no, that's wrong, against zero, abstentions four. So the budget is approved. Thank you very much, members. For agenda item 8.2, the housing revenue account budget and business plan, there are five recommendations, again, can we take those en bloc? Thank you. Mr Taylor, again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, Brian Adams?
Four.
Mike Band?
Four.
David Beaman?
Four.
Andrew Bolton?
Four.
Maurice Byham?
Four.
Carol Coburn?
Four.
Kevin Deenis?
Four.
Jenny Else?
Four.
Paul Follows?
Abstain.
Mary Forrowseski?
Four.
Michael Goodridge?
Four.
Tony Gordon Smith?
Four.
John Gray?
Four.
Jed Hall?
Four.
Val Henry?
No, she's not here.
Mike Hodge?[1622.01] Liz Townsend.
For.
Liz Wheatley.
For.
Nick Williams. Thank you.
So, the result of that vote is that we have four, 42, against zero, one abstention. So that is approved. Thank you very much, councillors. For agenda item 8.3, this is the council tax setting for 2019-20. There are three recommendations which we can agree by assent. Is that agreed?
Three.
Thank you very much. That's the conclusion of our budget considerations. We now will continue with the rest of the agenda, starting with the minutes of the executive meeting held on the 5th of February, which have been circulated as the two follow papers. I will ask the leader of the council to present these minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the executive. There are, as you have stated, two items to that executive. And I believe I have a second there.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the minutes of the meeting of the executive held on the 5th of February. The first item which members have before them is the council tax empty homes discount and empty homes premium. I'll wait while councillor Storey leaves the chamber. Again, my thanks to the Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee, who was part of the budget setting process. And also their review that evening looked at this matter as well and gave us their feedback. There are two recommendations to this item. And as I say, it relates to the amount of time that we allow and give a discretionary rate on council tax for empty homes. Clearly in Waverley, we want to encourage people to utilise homes. We don't want them standing empty. There is a housing need. We want to make sure that we do all we can, not just to gain additional revenue, but to ensure that people who leave homes empty decide that they will actually let them be used and move forward with proper residential use. And that is the purpose of this item before councillors this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers? If not, can we move to the recommendations? There are two recommendations on page three of the to follow pack. Are those agreed?
Three.
Thank you. Leader?
Thank you. The second item under these minutes, Madam Mayor, is the annual pay policy statement for 2019-20. And it's mandatory that this is reported by all councils. This statement is shown, and as I say, to accord with the Localism Act of 2011, which requires all public authorities to publish their annual pay policy statement. That is exactly what is before you this evening for Waverley Borough Council. And again, I commend that to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? As the leader has said, this is a requirement that we have to do every year. If no one wishes to speak, there is one recommendation, which is to adopt the annual pay policy statement for 2019-2020. Is that agreed?
Three.
Notice the statements on part two items. Councillor Hyman, I believe you have something to say on executive 74/18, the risk appetite statement.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The risk appetite statement was adopted by the executive a fortnight ago. And if members wouldn't mind turning to page 21 of their supplementary paper that came through the post of them. That's the Gray Papers. Page 21, 74.1 paragraph, does state in there that the audit committee members will be reviewing the risk appetite statement as an informal briefing later in the week. We did, a member of the audit committee, we did. But that was at an informal briefing. This has not been to the executive, sorry, to audit for agreement. We have got a meeting coming up where it will come forward. But the executive has agreed this risk appetite statement and the annex one and annex two, which you won't see in your papers, members. So you don't know what it was that was agreed. But my concern, and I did mention it at the briefing, and I wasn't the only member who did share that concern, was that we have an appetite under the heading of legal regulatory, which says that we accept trivial breaches or non-compliance. We accept isolated legal action or regulatory breach. So isolated regulatory breaches are fine. We are inviting our officers to come to us with things which are not legally compliant. We see this constantly. There was another decision made for Brightwells last week where, by NMA, where it's admitted in the decision notice that we are not complying with the legal constraints. That's what the guidance from council was to our officers. And it's there for people to read themselves. I'm very concerned that we don't have the right to make that decision, as far as I'm concerned. And I'd like to ask, if I may, I mean, this, of course, is not a criticism of any officer or anyone else in this chamber. Please just assume that I precede every statement I make with that this is not a criticism of any officer or anybody else in future. We are not, I do not believe that we have the authority to authorise ourselves and our officers to be in breach of regulations and to break the law. Our constitution is quite clear in numerous places. I'm not going to have time to read them all out. But the purpose of the constitution, it says at the start of it, the council should exercise all its powers and duties in accordance with the law and its constitution. And lady mayor, you are indeed the conscience of the council according to this. Now, I am very concerned that this has been agreed by the executive and that we do not have the authority to do so. The question which I've been trying to get an answer to is certainly through the standards hearing, was is legal compliance our primary duty? I believe that it is our primary duty as councillors to ensure that this council obeys the law. Because everything that we do is constrained by the law. So would you please confirm? I didn't get an answer to the last question I asked, of course. It just referred me back to what we had two years ago in Brightwells. But I would like an answer. Will you please confirm that our primary duty is to the law? And will you please confirm that we do not have the authority to authorise officers or ourselves to break the law? And so at our next meeting in March, in executive and council, we're going to need to reverse this risk appetite decision. Thank you. If I could have answers to those two questions. Is it our primary duty as members to obey the law and seek to ensure we obey the law?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Councillor Hyman, just to answer some of the points that you've raised, there's nothing here to suggest that we break the law. And of course, we don't break the law. No authority breaks the law. I do wonder if it would be helpful for you if perhaps you had a further one-to-one briefing on risk appetite and exactly what is involved in that, so that might aid you further. But of course, we're always happy to keep under review and consider any further recommendations that come through from the audit committee. That was something that we spoke about at the executive last week, when councillor Gray was speaking and asked some questions. And I'm quite happy to reiterate that. And of course, that is, I think, what we would all expect. Thank you.
Point of personal information, may I have answers to the questions?
No, 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 no.
So we're not allowed to ask questions?
No.
Right.
Sorry. Leader, are you, is that concluding your minutes?
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, that concludes my minutes. It concludes the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, leader. We now move on to item 10, which is the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee. Councillor Simon Inchbold to present. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to present the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of January 2019. And I have a second there.
Happy to second, Madam Chairman.
Madam Mayor, there is one item in part one, and that is licensing budget for 2019-20. The draft licensing budget that the committee considered and endorsed has been incorporated into the general fund budget for 2019-20. And that the council has now agreed. So there is nothing further for the council to agree. There are no matters in part two. So that concludes the minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee, 4th and 14th of January 2019. Hardly worth the walk, was it?
Thank you very much, councillor Inchbold. We now move to the minutes of the Standards Committee. Councillor Michael Goodridge to present.
Madam Mayor, my pleasure in presenting the minutes of the Standards Committee held on the 21st of January 2019. And I have a second there.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
There is one item in part one. The council will recall that in October, we agreed to re-designate the Standards Panel as the Standards Committee. At the meeting on the 21st of January, we considered the committee terms of reference to make sure they reflect what the committee actually does. The changes are relatively minor and are shown as tracked changes on pages 89 to 91 of the main agenda pack.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything they wish to comment on? If not, councillor Goodridge, would you like to sum up?
Nothing to add.
Well then, the recommendation is on, sorry about that. The recommendation is on page six of the main agenda pack. Is that agreed?
Three.
I've received no request to speak on items on part two. And that concludes the minutes of the Standard Panel on the 21st of January. However, there is an extra item, Madam Mayor.
There is an additional agenda item which was circulated at the beginning of last week. It's a decision of the Standards Panel, which met on the 1st of February, which is reported to council in accordance with our arrangements for hearings of a Standards Panel. This is for noting by council. Are there any speakers or can we agree to note that? Councillor Hyman wishes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to say, yes, well, this was a foregone conclusion.
Councillor Hyman, may I warn you before you begin that if there are any accusation of unlawfulness or any of that nature, I will be standing.
Well, you are the conscience of the council, aren't you? Yes. It was a foregone conclusion as a political decision, of course. But I'm not going to get into any details now. But if members would like to know what the decision was about, I will be appealing that decision anyway because, you know, we do have the responsibility of acting ethically in this chamber. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or shall we note the report?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to very, very quickly say this. I have noticed a couple of occasions today that you have cut off councillor Hyman quicker than other councillors. You have also prefixed many of your statements with warnings not to break the code of conduct. He has been punished for breaking the code of conduct in this report. I do think that actually we should just stick to what he was sanctioned with and not continue to do so before every speech he makes. Thank you.
I won't comment on that. Councillor Nabeel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All I would like to say is we control the council over here. But I think councillor Hyman is watching too many FBI and CIA movies to convince us all there's theft going on or anything. Thank you.
Right. So finally, is that noted, councillors?
Noted.
Thank you. There are no exempt items to consider. Thank you all for attending and the meeting is now closed.